I have to address some comments made by trustee Prejekbi regarding the protests in Hampshire in early June 2020. Those comments were made during the Village of Hampshire Board meeting on June 18th. And I paraphrase, citizens wanted to take matters into their own hands and came to protest bearing arms. In the interest of public safety, but our police department take care of this. I thought trustee Prejekbi would be interested to know that the state of Illinois, Lisa Madigan's Illinois Attorney General's office, also posed the argument that it was in the interest of public policy to restrict citizens' right to bear arms in public spaces. In 2011 and 2012, Lisa Madigan's office attempted to defend that argument in the Seventh Circuit of U.S. Court of Appeals. In the case of Moore versus Madigan, are you familiar?
I'm not familiar.
They were successfully sued there by Michael Moore, not that Michael Moore is seen on TV, but another man from Illinois named Michael Moore. For infringement of his constitutional Second Amendment rights by onerous Illinois state gun laws that made it impossible for citizens to defend themselves outside the boundaries of their homes or businesses. Illinois law at that time prohibited citizens from carrying a gun ready to use, meaning loaded, immediately accessible, easy to reach, and uncatched. Moore contended that Illinois gun laws violating the Second Amendment as interpreted in District of Columbia versus Heller, which is a ruling of the Supreme Court in 2008, and was held applicable to the states in McDonald versus the city of Chicago, which was also Supreme Court. Lisa Madigan's Attorney General's office had to provide a more than merely rational basis for believing this uniquely sweeping ban was justified by an increase in public safety. That was her argument. That was also your argument.
If I can contend, that is not my argument. I'll let you finish, but that isn't the argument I'm making.
And let's discuss.
Yeah, we can.
But I just want to, I want to make sure this is clear. That was the argument, and it failed to meet the burden.
Yes.
Illinois gun laws were found unconstitutional and the courts instituted permanent injunctions.
Sure.
The appellate judge gave the state 120 days to create a Second Amendment-friendly gun laws, and that is how Illinois went from the only state in the U.S. to prohibit the carrying of ready-to-use guns on the person in public spaces to a shell-issued concealed carry state in June 2015. What we can conclude from this case is the argument that public safety is enhanced by restricting citizens' rights to carry firearms in public as the lead-in valid by a Federal Court of Appeals and would ask the Hampshire Village Board to avoid attempting to overturn that conclusion during official meetings. Additionally, can I remind the Board that the right to peacefully assemble and speak freely are not negated when a person is exercising their Second Amendment rights?
Sure.
And the right to conceal, carry a firearm is not negated when a person is exercising that person. On behalf of myself and my handsome neighbors, I'd like to ask the Village Board to use their words more carefully. So it's not to be on the record as lacking knowledge about the history of Illinois gun laws or being ignorant of Hampshire's citizens' first and second amendment rights of the Constitution. We are not, you are not our parents. We are not your children. We do not appreciate being spoken to as though we are. We are adults. We are citizens. We understand our rights, and we intend to stand up for them.
Sure. As you have to make, and I appreciate you coming out.
Yes.
So let me at least, if I can add some clarification to the statement that I made.
Okay.
Certainly, at no point was I saying that citizens don't have the right to carry arms. That wasn't the point. The point is to go out looking or go out in sort of.
That's your, but that's your context. You don't know why they were out. Can you read their minds? Do you know in their minds they were out looking for trouble? You don't know that. They were out, they were protesters, they were counter protesters. Whether they're out seeking some problem or trouble is mind reading. You don't know. And it's their right to be out.
And I think this is actually an important conversation because I'm using their own words. They used on Instagram and on Facebook and on the videos that they shared, right, that they were out there policing.
Okay, that's illegal. So should they be arrested for that?
Well, those were conversations that we had with the chief.
They should be arrested. If someone's breaking the law, they should be arrested. The role of the police is to arrest the lawbreakers and to protect the rights of the citizens to exercise their constitutional rights. So if there's people who are breaking the law by threatening violence, then they should be arrested, and that should happen on both sides.
I agree.
Absolutely both sides.
And for clarification, he does not speak for me. I believe he doesn't speak for anybody else on the Board. Those comments were totally his, his alone, and I hadn't.
I did watch the response. I watched the video several times, and I did watch the response, and this is why I directed my address. Now, what I.
Well, if you let me, I owe you my opportunity. I mean, I gave you as much time as I could. So that's what, that was the notion that the destruction of private property is against, you know, the fundamental basis of, right? It has, the destruction of private property.
Was what private property destroyed?
If you could just let me finish a bit. So that was what, in a sense, they were out protecting. Whereas the words that they used and the videos that I had opportunity to witness, if we're going to decry that behavior, which I think we ought to decry, we have the same.
I disagree.
The destruction of private property.
Unless someone is breaking the law, they have a right to be out in public. They have a right to see.
You're not hearing me. If we're going to decry the concern, and we called up the state police because we were concerned about the destruction of private property, if we are going to decry that behavior, at the same time, we have to also decry citizens trying to act as police officers. And I was using their own words.
No, but here's where you break a law. Here's the point where you, where the government gets involved. Did someone break a law? If they broke a law, arrest them. If they didn't break a law, they have rights, period. There's really no gray area.
I don't disagree.
So, right, so.
And we didn't arrest them.
Right, but you're on record. You're sitting in this room and on record on Village, in Village records stating that people, what you inferred and what you said is that people do not have a right to be out. They have a right to be out regardless of what you think they're doing. You cannot read their minds. You don't know what they're thinking. It's not your business. And even if they're out there looking for trouble, as long as they don't cause any, they're still allowed to be out. Until they break a law, there is, you have no, you have no responsibility.
We will agree to disagree. Yeah, we can be here all night talking. Yeah, I mean, we're not doing. So, and I respect your opinion, and more importantly, I respect your opinion. I would just, only that I would say is know that I come to my conclusions very thoroughly on my own, you know, with maybe a different set of views than you do.
I think your words were inappropriate and very damaging to people's rights here in Hampshire, in the Hampshire township. It looks bad for the whole town, for someone to be denigrating people's rights.
I wasn't that opinion. Again, I respect your.
Point taken.
Point taken. Thank you. And I do respect your coming here and your support, and I respect your.
My goal was to get this on record. Did I accomplish that?
You did.
Thank you very much.
That's up.
That's it. Your turn.
Oh, my goodness. Good people. Yeah.
You can't go to the movies, so this is.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
July 2nd, 2020, please review the minutes. Any changes, additions, resolutions, corrections?
Yeah, I've got a correction under, oh, I don't know what page this is. Page four, where it talks about the approval of Resolution 20-06 for the municipal purposes surplus and obsolete. It was to be donated to a local veteran organization, not an individual veteran, so just adding the word organization to the end of that sentence, please.
Well, we were hoping it would be donated to a local veteran.
Yeah, that was, the discussion was that to talk to the local AMVets or VFW to see if they would want it donated to them, and they could figure out how to donate it out. I know we ended up going with the original plan, but it was for the organization is what I had, was what my motion was for.
So what change are you, was it to the minutes?
Just add organization after a local veteran.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's not what this is referring to, though. We wanted it added in there that the car or the truck, this big stuff would be donated to a local veteran.
Right.
So we took out the specific post number, that's a specific organization, but still wanted it, if possible, to be located or donated to a local veteran.
Okay, I may be remembering it wrong. It's, it's a small thing, so we can keep it as is. I'm good with that.
Okay, we'll leave it as is. That was, that was the hope, that it would be deleted or donated to a local veteran after it was turned over to a, it's got to be determined.
I'm going to miss, because I've been dealing with both of them since then. I believe I understood, intended last time. The intention, the motion was to take away Fox River, just say, donate it to the region.
Right.
And it was actually come back, and we hoped it would be better.
Yes.
But I believe the motion, trustee Kelly, I believe your motion was to donate it to a, an American Veterans Post, not Post 75. Is that correct to you?
That's correct.
That's what we did by deleting.
To American Veterans Post.
Which we did by deleting the post.
So he's correct. It should not stay donated to a local veteran. That was our intent later. It would be done, it would naturally be done. So it should be authorized donation of the property to, to the American Legion Post. That's how the final words for resolution is. I can't speak to this motion specifically.
All right.
And it is, well, it will be donated to the Fox River neighborhood. And we now have two veterans' names that are under consideration.
Any other changes to the minutes? And I want to entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the change on page two.
Some of them.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, oh, it's supposed to be real call.
We could do a real call.
Because we have an electronic member here. Sorry. Real call, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Real call. Sorry, Mr. Kelly.
No, it's fine. I just keep it on mute to minimize background. Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Jackie?
I'm staying.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Should pass one.
All right. Mr. Hedges, fill us in. Here's your report. There's a couple items.
Yes, we have a motion to approve a facade improvement grant to Christina Michelle Salon in the amount of $35,715.07. I'll defer to trustee Jackie. I just want to mention that we have in your packet tonight a agenda supplement that does give you the update numbers of what facade improvement has committed so far this fiscal year. It's something that we committed to doing late last year, so you have those numbers in front of you.
Okay, so, Christine, thank you for coming and joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's true. It was more entertaining than I told you on the phone. There was so much drama. I was excited. Oh, my blood is still going.
I knew that she was supposed to come, because I knew her hair, so.
Next time, I'll let you know. So we're going to table this?
No.
So, as many of you guys know, we started, as a group, we started the downtown facade program in an effort to correct basically well over a decade of not a lot of work being done in the downtown area. And the hope was to jumpstart renovation, was to jumpstart renovation.
Well, I forgot a little something.
I was concerned you were on vacation. So, so we have solicited, we continue to solicit new applications, and Christina Michelle and her salon has purchased the old Fifth Third Bank building, as you guys can see across the way. And she has been working alongside Bill Swalwell to sort of, yeah, come up with a plan that would basically renovate that building. I would like to pass this down to, unless you've already seen this story. I guess, it's something over a few yards ago. And this is for what? This is for the Fifth Third Building. So in the plan that Christine, Christina has put forward here, we're going to do a significant amalgamation originally. Jump in anywhere where you can add detail. Originally, we're going to look at working on the brick, but it turns out the brick that is on that building is beyond repair. So they're actually taking the major step of actually pulling the old brick off and replacing it with.
New brick.
Yeah, it's new brick.
Brick that's tumbled and will give that appearance of an older design.
Like an age, yeah, which is, yes, which is the imperfect step with what we're trying to accomplish in this area is to try to restore to some sort of historical look. As you can see, and to me, and to the beautification committee voted unanimously, as to the BDC also voted unanimously for this program, it, it will significantly, we believe, alter the exterior surface and be in line with, with the goals and the mission of the facade program. I can go on and on and talk about it, but I mean, it's pretty straightforward. Does anyone have any question? Like I said, it was unanimous at all.
When will the business be open?
And that, we're still working on getting some permits and things, so I'm not really sure. None with COVID happening. Hopefully, maybe.
The facade committee won't be issuing any reimbursement until the business is open, correct? Because we've never issued any facade approvals without a business already being there, open and running.
Okay, in our documentation, I would say that the documentation requires that the work be done and that the invoices be paid for prior to that being reimbursed. That is the language that's in there. Josh had done a fantastic job of cleaning that up and making it very easy. Josh, is there anything in there about businesses being like?
Checking right now. I think we're dealing with the facet rescue.
Yeah, facet is technically still not even. Again, I mean, that's, it's an interesting point, and that may be something for future considerations and maybe modify the order. But that certainly wasn't anything that we informed as we worked alongside the salon. Something that, that was a requirement that we had informed them. We had just informed them that, you know, they need to get approval before they start to work, and then they don't get reimbursed until they complete the work and those invoices have been paid for. But as you can see, we believe that it will add a significant value to the facade appearance. I mean, it's a gorgeous plan. We think it's fantastic. In line, I think, with some of our other building owners.
It's a great project. I don't know that the facet house place is still open yet. They got money. Oh, I know that. And we were going to look into that too, because that was not a facade when you're doing trusses and stuff. That's more, more than what the BDC was chartered to do. And then we were going, remember, we talked about that, the knee walls and all the concrete stuff?
Yeah, probably resolved that issue.
We resolved that. That's not going to happen again without, it's got to be in some language or something. We have to review that.
Yeah, I would be open to entertaining any changes to the languages.
But I have no problem issuing side money. I just think the business should be up and running. I mean, what would prevent someone to get the side money, do the building, and then flip it and sell it?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Honestly, truthfully, our goal is to improve the aesthetics of it.
I understand that.
And if they did that, I guess as long as they didn't, you know, do a tattoo parlor or something.
Yeah, no, I'm saying that's going to happen, I mean, I just, I.
I've already been on trouble for a while.
I just have no problem issuing money to a business that's not running.
No, I think it's a fair point. And you point about the, so one of the things, I think it makes sense, is to be concerned about, you know, additional things beside the front.
I know, but if you look up actual, the word facade and dictionary, I don't think it says trusses and knee walls and block and brick and stuff. That's, a facade's the face, and we got a builder right here that's probably done a few of them.
I do believe when we did, I had to get the cost of the facade.
The face.
Just the front, yeah.
Correct.
I had to separate that from the whole pair of costs.
That's something that, that's something that the BDC needs to really look into.
Any other questions, Aaron?
The total amount, does that include that $650 plan fee, or, I mean, do we cover those type of costs, Ryan?
We do, yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's in the language.
Like as part of professional architecture fees, things? Okay.
Yeah, and Bill Swalwell really does do an excellent job of walking through these things in very, very specific detail. So, and we have in the past mixed and crossed things out that we didn't want.
My, agnostic of this project, my question to you, Ryan, with the budget that this leaves, the beautification committee for the facade program for the remainder of this fiscal year, does this allow you to cover anticipated or expected applications that may come in? Does it, does it kind of deplete most of your budget? How does this affect your ability to help other businesses?
Yeah, it's a fair question. So we've, and that's something that we debated, actually quite extensively in committee, is, you know, do you sort of set a timetable where you let all the applications come in, and then you review them all and try to pick the ones that have the most merit and rewarded, or you go on a first-come, first-served basis? To this point, and I don't know if it's just because of the timing of things, we have gone with the first-come, first-served basis. But certainly with the wording of this particular project, it will bring us to a lower total of.
Twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, twenty-one thousand dollars, so people still have some money to do some. But, you know, and that's usually what we, we talk to, even I think with Ms. Michelle, that the conversation is that, you know, it's, it's in your interest to move quickly because there is only limited funds. We had a reduction in the total funds that we had available this year from 100,000 to 75,000, and so we do encourage applicants to.
I think there's only one other application that you're aware of. Available funds would cover that, right?
That's correct, yep. But to Aaron's point, in if someone wanted to come in September or October or something, we may run into a point where we have to kick them to next year.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. I mean, you, you know how you're budgeting the program. It might be just something for next year, before next budget year, to think about for what the BDC of, do you say all applications are due by this time for the fiscal year? And, you know, then you guys are kind of comparing everything there, but it's hard when businesses move in mid-year or need stuff mid-year, so totally get it.
Hard thing too is asking people to wait to a certain date, you know, because everyone's eager to get going and get working and, um, but it's certainly something that we can continue to consider, along with Toby's suggestion.
All right. Moving on.
Okay, do I make the motion then?
Do you like, is this the number, 35,715.07?
That's correct, yep.
I would entertain a motion to approve the facade improvement grant to Christina Michelle Salon in the amount of $35,750.07. So moving. Second. Any questions or comments? Real call, please.
Mr. Jackie?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Pine? Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Lovely. We're excited. Thank you.
I am excited. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for investing in Hampshire. We appreciate it.
I feel like Hampshire invested into it for my whole life, and everyone, and so supportive, that I never would have thought that I would be purchasing a building. And when I purchased it, I had no idea about this program, and when COVID came its way, and I had a lot of time left, I just became my focus, which is really exciting to talk together.
Awesome. Well, we're seeing the finished product.
Yeah, thank you.
I buried it, right, Nick?
Thank you. You guys too.
Ryan, we have a motion to authorize staff to work with EEI to prepare specifications and bid stormwater improvements for the 300 block Highland Avenue. I'll just make a brief introduction, and I'll ask Tim to speak for a few minutes to get specifics of the project. I've given you an agenda supplement with a rather, rather complex-looking paragraph of numbers, so I hope you've all had a chance to read that. The challenge for these projects is that we just, as a community, we're not eligible, as we spoke at the last large meeting regarding stormwater management. We're just not eligible for a lot of grant programs or any grant programs related. So we try to get creative, and we do have available MFT funds that just not able to be used for that purpose. So a little creative staff work here. Miss Lyons offered the possibility, the option to, we are able to use motor fuel tax funds for salaries in the street department, and until now, we have not. But because we have a surplus of available MFT funds, we've chosen to make that recommendation that we will use the 685,000 that's available now. Only a portion of that is committed this year, and then we're anticipating more revenue coming in this year. Because this is really the first fund that Lori's had a chance to forecast for the full year, so this is what we hope to be able to do for you for all the funds by early September, if not sooner. But in this case, we're recommending that we, we spend there for $125,000 out of a general fund. Excuse, we're not asking for appropriation here for spending. We're just going to go for bid, so this is just a budget number. This will come back to the Board. This will be specifications by normal bidding process. That will be done by EEI, and then we'll come back to the Board with those results, or can recommend a specific contract. So in that case, then the motor fuel tax would be used to pay salaries in the street. So Lori, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the financial side of it. This is not a unusual expense to use MFTs for street salaries. We certainly have available, they're strictly restricted to use of these funds. We use it for salt, basically. That's the street improvements throughout the year. That's really all we can do. And then, as we spoke at the last meeting, we also have this $360,000 that comes from IDOT over the next two years. So we're, we're going to have a fair amount of money for road improvements. The problem is, we need other things as well. This allows us to use those funds for staff and use general funds for this project. If there are no questions about the dollar amounts, I will defer to Tim just briefly. If you could explain Project Tim, or any stuff there.
Yeah, thanks, Jay. So we talked about this last month in June, when I gave a short presentation on some stormwater items in the village. So there's, I think there's an exhibit, the exhibit from the previous meeting in your packets, that shows the, what was, improvement to provide the 10-year level of protection for that low point on Highland Avenue that overflows. And so we reviewed the cost estimates from 2018 when we did the study, looking at projects we've bid out this year in the IDOT database for this year. Because it's a job with small quantities, there's sometimes uncertainty in unit prices. So a couple of prices, particularly the storm sewer pipe and the paving items, were looking more expensive than I had them in my estimate. So I adjusted some of the line items, about half the increase from what was estimated in, in 2018. It's for the cost of the pipe, and then the others for the paving and the, and the riprap item. So, you know, we believe we could still get this prepared in the next month, get it out to bid in August, or end of August, and have construction in the fall if, if things move, move forward here. Happy to answer any questions.
One question I have, Tim. On, on the cost estimates.
Yes.
On line 13, we're adding 500 linear feet of 15-inch storm sewer, but in line 16, we're only taking out 300 feet. So.
Right, so we're removing, on Highland, we're removing some existing storm sewer and replacing it with a 15-inch to get it to the 18-inch quicker. If you're looking at the exhibit, that's the part up in the mid-block. But then we're also running outfall storm sewer to the wetland and basins to the east that takes some storm sewer on Panama and takes it directly into those basins instead of into the outfall from Highland Avenue storm sewer. So in that case, that's new storm sewer without any removal.
So on, on the, the map that's shown here, is the extra 15-inch also include from Warner to the spot on Highland? Because at the Mauer's House, it goes to the Centennial, right? I'm just trying to figure out where the 15-inch comes in.
So the, the 15-inch pipe is replacing the 10-inch on Highland. It's highlighted in green on the exhibit. And then also, there's the 15-inch storm sewer going to the, to the basin to the east from Centennial that takes the water from Panama directly into that wetland. into that wetland detention area instead of down Centennial and then mixing with uh, there's, those storm sewers are all interconnected at Highland and Centennial. So it removes some of the flow that, so that provides more capacity for the water coming down Highland.
The levels of that detention area because nothing flows into there at the moment, I believe.
This, yeah, that's a, that's a wetland area. It's not, it's not um, it's not actually uh, basin for the, for the subdivision. It's a wetland area.
Yeah, sorry. Is that going to cause a problem for those residents right there if we were backing up to that?
Um, I don't, I don't believe so from what we looked at. There's.
So, so Tim, you're saying the additional pipe that is highlighted there in green that says new outfall for Panama Street Storm Sewer, that the flow from Panama that's redirected to that wetland, it's not estimated at a ten year, fifty or whatever we're looking at rain event, that it will overfill that wetland and potentially flood the backyards of those homes that back up to it?
Correct. So I mean, I could come back with some documentation on that if you, if you'd like. There's uh, quite a bit of, I believe, available volume there. And there, there is a connection between the wetland and the, and the detention basin, not uh, not through a pipe, but through, you know, hydraulically and through the soils. So I believe that um, you know, you would temporarily, temporarily store the water in, in the wetland and then it would go out through infiltration and through the vegetation as the water, uh, you know, as it normally functions as a wetland.
So Toby, can I ask you a question? Because I think this is close to you. If I'm looking at this satellite map for that wetland where it looks like it's like messed up dirt all around the south side, south, right? South side of it. Is that uh, cattails or is that actual vegetation? Do you know?
Both.
So is there a fear that we now also will have to maintain that entire wetland in order to ensure that we still have the volume available in five to ten years that's currently there?
Um, the cattails and, and stuff that's grown in there will actually thrive with the excess water and uh, it'll literally choke it. It'll dam it off. That's why getting rid of this stuff is so important.
Okay.
And that's just from thirty years in, in the suburbs. It'll choke it and, and create more flooding.
Okay.
Unless they, unless they maintain it and burn it. I mean, after you get it maintained like Mr. Hedges says, then it's okay. But until you do it, you know, you're just going to flip a coin and, right, oh, it lands right.
And then Tim, the, just so I know, because I know there's lots of different colors in all the pipes on here, the entire project we're talking about, the hundred and twenty five thousand for this is just the highlighted, the replace ten inch storm sewer with fifteen inch storm sewer and new outfall for Panama. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes. And that uh, you know, the price that's, if you look at the cost estimate, there's a, you know, we have a ten percent contingency on there to try to, you know, predict uncertainty in bidding. And then that includes uh, engineering costs as well.
Is this pond on our burn schedule?
Yeah, that's what I was just discussing. Toby, this is on our list against his work. This is one, this is about your area, right? Uh, both, both kind, yeah, kind of, yeah. So we, we do have a maintenance plan for this pond and it will be maintained. So I think the comments that trustee Coe was making were, were addressing those issues for the first time in a very long time.
I'm comfortable with it. We maintain the pond. I'm not comfortable if we're just going to dump that water and then you got four or five houses that get flooded because of it.
It's, Tim, let me ask you this. The, the pond at, I don't know if it's White Oak Pond or whatever they call it. When that, when that thing was built, it was designed uh, in, in depth and with uh, shoreline, if you will, to hold a certain amount of water. We've now shrunk that pond considerably because the cattails have taken it over. So we've actually shrunk the volume of water that that pond will hold. Am I right or am I wrong?
The, yeah, I, I mean, I guess I don't, I don't know enough about that pond and the history of maintenance on that pond, but correct, if, if you do allow.
Let me ask you this. If you have a five acre pond and you lose an acre of it to cattails, now you have a four acre pond.
Right.
Will a four acre pond hold less volume of water than a five acre pond?
It will hold less volume, but it's not a complete, you don't lose that acre completely because usually these ponds have, you know, four to six feet of depth of bounce in them when you uh, you know, your stormwater is going to fill up. So you, you still have, it does take some of the volume, but you still have volume in and around and above the, the cattails in the large events.
Mayor, I'd like to, with your permission, I'd like to um, consult with trustee Coe and also with Tim. And before this comes back, the recommendation to board after it's bid, we'll come back with a, a plan on, bring you up to date on, on a new bias and the capacity nation to find its problem.
Well, certainly we'll do that.
Yes. Do you guys, uh, we have a gentleman here about Panama that kind of switches uh, in Panama at State Street. I know it's something that we talked about looking at as well. Have you guys done any work on that yet? Preliminary studies?
Uh, yeah, we had done, uh, you know, we had designed a second phase of the South Street Storm Sewers in two thousand and eight that included crossing of State Street. And then, so I have been working on the updates to that and then optioned update from an eighteen inch to a thirty inches was requested. So um, you know, we're finalizing those of um, so I'm sure you'll be seeing Jay, you know, Jay will bring those to you uh, in the near future.
Were they working at State and Panama today?
I wasn't there. I didn't see.
I wasn't either. I live there.
They, they had the road, they had two blocks of the road closed. South Street was, well, maybe it was south.
Yes, south.
No.
You can know the streets anyway.
Doing one roadwork in south. We, we should have similar information as this for Panama's clause. Probably for the next one. Excellent. So I will entertain a motion to table B under those managers report. Go move.
Thank you.
But I missed that. Mayor, yeah, I, I was, is that a response to my comment?
So you wanted to.
No, actually, what I intended to say was that we will go ahead and bid the project before we come back and recommend.
Oh, yeah, at least that bid. I heard him say that.
Then we'll update, we will give you a proper pond maintenance program and, and, and measure the capacity of this pond, make sure it has that. Yes.
Okay.
We would like to see what the specs of the bidding. Then I will scrap my motion and I will make a new motion to authorize staff to work with the E I to prepare bid specifications for the Highland Avenue uh, improvements.
Some of.
Second.
You're, you're feeling, wait a second, did you feel, I'm sorry, approval? Yes, it's a funny one. Say, thank you, just let, let God have.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Pine?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Kevi?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
I'm a.
Mr. Kevi, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I just want to introduce this briefly. We've talked several times in the last six months about departmental reports and various things. At one point, uh, trustee Kelly asked about building permit report. Uh, we did, we were not able to produce a good report prior fiscal year because we're not reporting the proper details in M S I our system. Uh, since May first, we have started to do that properly. Josh has really gotten involved in the building department and especially permitting and reporting to the permits. So I'm going to ask him to give your presentation today on permitting uh, through, through June of this year.
Share the screen just so that trustee Kelly can score from, he's in the screen. So trustee Kelly can see everything we're talking about. Okay. The agenda supplement has some numbers. Um, if you have questions about it, it's of course asked. This is the first report. So if you don't like how something's presented, uh, if something doesn't make sense, I can always change it in the future because this will hopefully become a semi-regular, not regular thing. Uh, so the first chart you see here is simply the number of permits by permit type that have come in in May and June. Uh, the permits that were applied for, uh, fences, patio, driveways, siding, all kinds of things. Second to look if you have it. So major ones, uh, most numerous ones are fences and book months, uh, patios took a little bit of a jump, additions, alterations and renovations, which later you will see are by far the most valuable uh, by construction value. Um, driveways took a large jump. I, I don't know why any of this happened. Of course, it's all individuals to apply for permits without asking them or really tell you. I would love to, and we'll show you some information about last fiscal year and then what everybody's staying home for COVID has done to our building department as far as people being home and doing projects. So any questions about this before I move to the next slide? Okay. So then this chart right here is a pie graph, shows the total fees that we are to be collected. Some of them have been, but since these were permits that have been applied for and not necessarily to get, uh, they, the inspections may still be going. We may not have collected the fee yet because they haven't picked up their permit. Um, these are the total fees by permit type. Uh, new residential, again, overwhelmingly the most collected fees followed by fences, patio, driveways, and it goes down significantly from there. And then we have the final chart, which is the total value, meaning the construction value uh, of these permits except for additions, alterations, renovations, and new residential because when I made that pie graph, uh, you couldn't see anything else because uh, additions, alterations, renovations, and new residential were uh, about eighty seven dollars or more alone. And again, the roots, that is X tend to be the big winners. So are there any questions before I make some points about the numbers uh, in the next pieces? Okay. So this is a summary report. Uh, the reason that there's a lot of blanks there is because I intend to present the same sheet every time it's presented. So you can see uh, change over time. And one thing to note is that the second line numbers has been issued. Uh, that means that say in May, of the seventy six permits that were applied for in May, as of the day I ran the report, sixty five had been issued, which is about eighty five, over eighty five percent. Uh, that number changes. So as I update this, that number will hopefully keep climbing, going up to ninety seven, ninety eight, ninety nine percent. And then it won't be hard from there to say why are these three permits still outstanding six months later? Maybe there's some weird problem. Uh, any questions about anything on here? Yes. Are the same ones, now this is really just more curiosity, uh, the same ones that are applied for in May, all the ones that are issued or is there some crossover? So whether. There's definitely crossover. That's the next thing I was going to bring up. Uh, the way M S I works, you can run the report on everything issued in a month or everything applied for in a month. But it's really difficult to marry those two together. I haven't found a way to do it. Try. Uh, and that's also the reason I can't really tell you anything about how long it takes to review and issue them uh, without just going line by line through every single permit. Uh, hopefully we might be able to figure out how to run some custom reports or, or figure something else out in the future. First report.
Thanks, Charlie.
That's one of the shortcomings of M S I and why we're talking about upgrading that. Okay. Another thing to note on this is the, I broke up two sections there. The bottom section is, is different than the top. It's not the same set of permits. So the, the bottom section is more just a snapshot of kind of the fiscal activity of building permits. Uh, fees collected are not necessarily for the permits that we had the expenses on, if that makes sense, because we incur expenses as there are inspections and things. We may not receive a permit until three weeks later into the next month when the permit's picked up and paid for. Uh, and revenue might not be a perfect word there, but it's, it's the difference between what we collected and what we had expenses for.
So I, uh, two, two questions. One, the variance between fees collected, expected and the total fees shouldn't, is there a reason why we're not expecting eight thousand dollars or over eight thousand dollars worth of what the total fees in the month were? Wouldn't we expect that?
Uh, we could if I could also get the other side of M S I, which talks about when everything is issued. So for example, in June, uh, the eight thousand six hundred ninety eight is expected fees from everything applied for in June. Now, of course, there were some permits applied for in May that were issued in June and we collected the fees in June. So that number should always be higher as long as we're collecting fees like we should. Uh, the actual should always be higher than the expected because we're collecting fees on previous month's permits.
Okay. And so then my second question is, and I'm asking this because I'm actually going through filling out a permit right now. Uh, it's my understanding that the fees are actually due when you put in for the permit, not after an inspection and it passes, that the inspections are, that you're given a, a clear bill after the work, but you actually pay for your permit before the work is done, but once it's approved.
Yeah. So. You, you definitely pay for the permit uh, before you actually pick it up. Uh, just based on feedback from Linda, as the person that has to deal with people paying for the permits, uh, we've changed it from do it pickup to we're trying to collect it as early as we possibly can. Uh, so right after they get a permit number, uh, Ms. West calls them and says, can you please pay online? We updated that online features. People can pay online with their permit number. Uh, so, so yes, you're, you're correct that uh, you, you do pay for it before.
Okay. And then one of the major pieces back we got from residents was the time it takes somebody to get a permit. Like there were some permits that have been outstanding for two months. Now, when I look at this, there's twenty two percent fiscal year to date that haven't been issued. The majority of that in June, but we're still at fifteen percent. And as you said, some of them issued in May, may have been from April or March or even earlier. So we can't compare applied for in May and issued. We, I think we can say safely as a board that those sixty five are not all May applicants. So do you know of those numbers? How many are denied versus they just haven't been processed?
Uh, two, two answers. Firstly, the sixty five were all applied for in May. The sixty five is the subset of the total applied for in May. Uh, additionally, we did also issue more permits in May that may have been from April. Um, but what we're looking at is applied for in the month.
No, no, I'm sorry. I was saying the issued. The sixty five issued is May and any other months where they were just happened to be issued in the month of May.
No, that's, that's incorrect. The sixty five is a subset of, of the seventy six applied for in May, sixty five of them have been issued.
Oh, okay. I thought you said you couldn't tell which ones. So you had to go through manually and do that?
No, I, I can't tell which ones you're talking about, which are everything issued in May regardless of when it was applied for.
Okay.
And trustee Kelly, what we really want to do is we'd like to tell you that the average permit is issued in, in fourteen point two days. Uh, M S I just doesn't give us that ability right now, but we may be able to write some code and get a report that we tell us that.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's, that's really the meaningful data here and we're working at. Yes. And we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars budget to get rid of M S I. Just need uh, maybe eight months to get ready.
Yeah, I think, I know permits are going to slow down in the winter, but one thing for the board to consider, if you look at these numbers, if you take like the average total fees year to date and then say, what is that averaged over a twelve year, twelve month span? We're looking at over two hundred thousand dollars in fees. And I know we've talked about, do we just bring this internal? I think it's worth after this year, when we have these actual numbers for us to take a deeper consideration of, is this something we still need to outsource or do we just outsource inspections that maybe aren't, that require a specialist versus paying the majority of two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars out to B N F?
Aaron, we looked at this a couple of years ago and the disadvantage we would have to bring it in-house is not all inspectors have electrical cert, plumbing cert, uh, city sewer and water and all the other certifications where a company like B N F has a large company. And if you need a, a plumbing certification, they'll send out that guy. And it's impossible for an inspector, for one inspector to get that many certs to do his inspections legally.
You almost have to have enough revenue to hire three years so fast.
Yeah.
Something like that. More than just one. Because I remember that was one of the first things we talked about when I got.
Because we, we talked about, we, we kept a used squad car. We wanted to hire somebody in-house. Cause we, we talked about, we, we kept a used squad car. We wanted to hire somebody in-house. And uh um it just wasn't feasible because of the amount of certifications that somebody would need. We couldn't pay him.
Still have to outsource.
We can always keep an eye on that and there may become a timing that works that that we've talked about this before. I think trustee Kelly, what's nice about having the outside resources is they are scalable. We only pay for what we use. We're going into a really bad year where nobody builds anything, a recession that right now, uh that people seem to be building to this recession. Um we we don't have any costs. We don't have to lay anybody off if we get a real busy year like this year. I will say one thing that that I I believe permits have taken a little too long in April and May. We just got flooded. We were just buried in permits. Uh we 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 were rotating shifts in the office, so in terms of the paperwork, it took a while for our residents to learn how to submit their new applications online. So I think we're much uh much more prepared now than we were two months ago, thanks to the pandemic. Uh but the, the thing about outside resources, you you have all the skill levels and all the certifications needed and it's scalable. But at a point where it's, it appears to be something we could bring in-house, I would certainly recommend that. Any other questions? Obviously, there's no action needed or anything. It's just informational. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next job. Thank you.
Excellent job. Anything further, Mr. Hedges?
Yes, sir.
Bill Trail Committee reporter.
Number four, let's joke usually sometimes say something ahead.
Uh what is the comment doing with the path as far as that feeling? Cause I started that though already. You know, the the stuff along the trail they messed up two years ago or whatever. I know, but I mean.
That's our responsibility. So in other words, Dave is uh.
Oh, okay.
A required contractor.
I did. I started.
You wanna just do it yourself instead of.
I don't have that much dirt.
Dave Dell's got some. I do not trailer. Get some citizens.
Village Services reporter.
Uh the only report I have, Waste Management delivered our volume report. We're still throwing away a ton of trash and a ton of recycling. Other than that, that's it.
What are you doing? You're dirty recycling.
So I need to connect with Vaughn to find out about the audit, because as of right now, I don't believe they've been red tagging anybody. I think during the COVID pandemic, they just stopped because they didn't want their drivers out of the vehicles, which I understand. If that's the case, um we need to understand how that is gonna affect when we do a um, an audit. Again, I'm gonna ask that the audit be pushed back. But year to date, we're at sixty five percent of what we did total last year. So. Pe- people are home and they're throwing stuff away. Uh the only other issue that came up, there were um some emails back and forth that I have to dig a little bit deeper into. People trying, are talking about trying to get uh utilities in and. Us trying to threaten the, that we would change our franchise agreements with utilities. So I just wanna, for the record, and so everybody knows. Back, I don't know how long ago it was, five years, seven years ago, the state of Illinois passed where all, all franchise agreements with telecommunications. So with MediaCom, with AT&amp;T, Verizon, everybody, all franchise agreements are actually owned and run by the state, not by the individual municipalities. So we don't have a franchise agreement anymore that allows us to have weight over what these telecom companies can or cannot do within our village. So just to, to put that out there. It was something I had looked into with the whole MediaCom thing when they, we were having some issues. And trying to get Comcast to do high-speed internet within our residential area.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yep.
The Public Works just wants to report that of of the last three years of all the flooding, they're uh doing a ton of maintenance on catch bases, sewer pipes. All of the pipes that have rotted underneath. And have voids in them. They're doing all that and their new guy got his CDL today.
Hey Toby, I have a question. Um how does a resident or is it possible for a resident to put in a request or. File something to have a stormwater system or a water system videoed? To see if there's issues with the pipes or issues with whatever blockage?
I think the best answer to that would be uh Mr. Hedges.
Well, I'm here. Take the signal.
Take the swing, buddy.
Yeah, if there's a process or somebody they should reach out to if they're saying, hey, we'd like, we think there's an issue with the system, we'd like to have it looked at.
Yes, our village manager, because then he will refer with Dave, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Not talking on somebody's private property that we would televise. You're just talking about our system.
I'm talking about our star, stormwater system, our water system, those main pipes.
I don't think we can televise our water system.
Trust to Kelly.
Well, the stormwater, sorry, it's the stormwater systems.
Trusty, let me just clarify one thing. We have a, we have a very simple, simplistic um old camera. It's not recent. Okay, sorry, not old. We we can only, we can only do uh small portions of of a pipe at a time. We can't run it the entire length. You have to go out and rent those guys. At least as a kind of services. So we we can do short looks. I just want to be clear on that. So for residences, if there's a block, part of a block, yes. Or a cast, but we are limited what we can do with our on televised without going on outside service.
Yeah, okay, understood.
BDC, um we've had two meetings since the last time you guys got together, uh or last time the village board got together. Uh we had a meeting on uh Monday of uh, or Wednesday of uh last week. And that meeting, we discussed the, we had a town streetscape per um. Sort of concept proposal that Freddie's gonna be taking to the um, the CDBG down in uh state of Illinois. We did a lot of work on that. We spent about two hours on that, made a lot of progress. I think there's a public hearing that's gonna be coming up soon. And then ultimately it will come to work here. So we were very excited about it. We thought uh, I think you guys will be excited about it too when you see it.
I'll try to check that. Yeah, we'll be at the next board meeting. The public hearing will be at the board meeting and we'll ask you your, your vote on that program next, in two weeks.
I think that's part of the requirement, right, in order to uh make the formal application for the grant.
Yeah, we just gotta have a seven days notice. We didn't have time to do that. For public hearing.
And then we had a regulation, uh our normally scheduled BDC meeting on this Monday where uh we basically just went through uh, obviously the, of the Christina Michelle facade application. Um we had a chance to take a look at the uh, the Swallows communication group that brought in, you know, you guys had requested that we get more details on the wayfinding. So uh they actually uh. Um done a lot of work on that, so we're not quite there yet to to bring it to you guys, but we did that as well. Um and uh Dave, because a lot of had done the survey. I don't know if anybody had seen that on Facebook regarding how has COVID changed your life at at home? And there was some very interesting uh results that he had pulled out of there. We had gone through that. Um a lot of information that I think would be useful for uh Jeanne Mayer and we're at the chamber, so he's going to send that information out forward to her. And sort of just talk with her about how we can help local businesses sort of take advantage of the um, of polling that we did uh from the residents here. And uh coming up, uh we've got uh, uh the possibility, Susie Copaz. We had finished, totally finished the Main Street program that you guys have voted for, all five sets of training session. Every single document that was provided to us from that is now been loaded on, on the SharePoint. Um so that uh village will have that going out in perpetuity in the event that uh people on the board change over time. Um they'll have access to those resources that the village pays for, um which we think is uh very exciting. Um and then Susie's report is uh we're entertaining the possibility through the Main Street Committee, they recommend the formation of a broader committee. That would be non-government related sort of, um that would have uh members from uh multiple organizations, whether it's the park district, the township, the. Um yeah, Chamber of Commerce and things like that that would, you know, sort of work on operating um, yeah, towards the goals of improving and enhancing the. So that.
How many denials do you guys get on your facade program month?
We've got, we've got twelve total applications. Um do we have denials?
Yeah, I mean, you, the BDC denies the uh, the grand application or?
I think technically everything that's ever been applied for has eventually crossed the finish line.
Okay.
But we had pushed back on, I think the closest to a denial we would have would have been Mills Von Gruen. But I think the, this board actually, I think, agreed to, to award it twenty five percent funding when our board actually had voted to not. Uh only because he didn't follow any of the rules whatsoever. So, but we have pushed back on pretty much. And like you said, there's a lot of coaching that goes along through the verification, so um. Yeah, I guess they, I don't know how to answer.
I I I guess my question is, if if uh a business applies for facade and gets shot down. Uh do you guys have a mechanism to notify the trustees so that uh when approached in town, they don't look like uh morons because they're not familiar to talk about? Or do you, or do you not shoot anybody down in the facade program?
Yeah, so I guess our, our goal is um to answer that question. I don't know this.
Huh?
They're trimmed back, they're trimmed down, I would say.
Okay.
Nobody's been shot down.
No, I don't think so. I mean, like it's been pushed, we did push, we asked people to change, we gathered, we pushed back on them, like.
Okay.
Some things. Um but usually if someone wants to participate in the program, you know, we want them to finish. And that's the goal, but there are certain, you know, things that uh, you know, either, you know, like in Mills' case, he was, it's almost like he didn't read anything. Uh he didn't even read the facade program and and those are friends of mine.
Okay.
So come say it. But no, our, our hope is that anybody who comes and starts finishes, you know, um but there's always some pushback.
Okay.
Hey Red, I got a question about the um concept plan for the streetscape. I got the BDC meeting invite, but I wasn't able to attend. Is there a, a file attachment or some document of the streetscape concept plan that you can share?
Yeah. I'll, I'll send you the whole packet there.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I would imagine.
I'd like to see what was discovered, what it looks like.
That, that'll be in the agenda for the next board meeting, but I'll get it out to you this week.
Yeah, it's pretty detailed. Yeah, if you go down that, no more report. Let's give other questions. And then actually, one of the questions from the minutes of last week, it said something about wandering from our mission. I was just kinda curious what was, is there anything I need to address as far as that? It was in the minutes from last meetings, whether BDC was formation of committees wandering from its mission. Is there anything I need to, a curiosity, I'm sure it was just someone asking a question.
I think it was a, it, there was a topic about zoning or something that had come up or not, maybe not, but building stuff.
Let's go and be handled by zone. adjudication, adjudication.
Adjudication, that was.
Now, we just keep bringing it up as a topic to get a a refresh as to where we're at. Our goal is for it to not go away.
I think the concern was that the BDC is trying to branch out more than what they should be and they need to be more conscious of what they were set up to do.
Yeah, so we, we gave the adjudication over to uh planning and zoning, correct? It was originally something that came out of our group. And it just had, nothing's really, I mean, and then it was Jay and Josh sort of had taken it up. So we just have it on our agenda just to ask, hey, where's it at? We're not, because to us, and Toby. BDC is concerned about adjudication because it affects the appearance of buildings downtown, which I think affects the um, the, the property value, the people, the businesses that are down there. So for us, we don't wanna have our hands in it, but we wanna know, hey, are we, you know what I'm saying? Cause we have facade program, we've offered businesses this opportunity. If they don't wanna take advantage of it, that's fine, it's their choice, but we still need to have some mechanism to. You know, and then ultimately, and I think you, you know, we talked about it in uh planning and zoning uh committee. And eventually, you know, the mechanics and that's gonna come not from our group, so. But that's very funny.
Good. Finance has a couple items.
So before you, you have accounts payable for some reimbursements. Um total of a hundred and fifty nine dollars and sixty six cents to be paid on it before July twenty second. My fiftieth birthday. Any questions?
Yes, I know it's minimal, but I'm page seven.
Wait, wait, wait. We're on the reimbursement. Hundred and fifty nine dollars and sixty six cents.
Cody Gridley's in sixty or forty.
Okay, so no questions.
I will make a motion, or I will attain a motion to pay uh bill's payable amount of one hundred and fifty nine dollars and sixty six cents. Go. Thank you. Want you to comment? Go call.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
It's fine. Hi, she's a co.
Hi.
He's a good Jackie.
Hi.
You have a seat.
Hi.
There is correction to the big one.
Very only question.
It is a new amount. We are paying two hundred and eighty three thousand, six hundred and forty eight dollars and seventy five cents. And that was for thirteen temporary occupancy permits that we released back to Lennar. With how many outstanding? Nine, nine additional, nine more to call. Any questions?
Yes, page seven.
Page seven.
Still page seven.
I understand it's a minimal charge, but uh the last item, Jason and Sons violation mow and trim, is that for like a residence? Why is Public Works not pulling that?
Why isn't Public Works mowing it?
Why are they not, why are we hiring that out?
They hire it out just so that they can build somebody.
The resident can build for it.
Well, I know the resident gets built for it, but why isn't Public Works just doing?
First, our own personnel.
Yeah, okay. Just carry on.
Let's use here to fight, buy, uh file a lien where we have an actual bill to file against the property.
Gotcha.
Willby, what's your question?
Uh page two.
Yes.
Uh under the current member service, we have a over limit fee of thirty five dollars on the credit card and interest of twenty eight. Why are we paying interest?
So unfortunately, last month when the bill was paid, we short paid seventy six dollars and eleven cents in error. And they go back, we had a. My recollection is the bill was approximately eight hundred and fifty three dollars. They go back and they calculate the interest on the entire amount of bill rather than just on the seventy six dollars that was out. So we, um I called and asked for it to be waived, um cause we, you know, we don't typically pay interest because we pay time money. And so that's under review, but we need to pay that or otherwise we'll now pay interest on three thousand dollars. So, yep.
And what is our limit? Twenty five hundred?
Yep.
Raise that to a, something reasonable, like five thousand?
I spent uh three thousand dollars on all the sound equipment.
Oh geez, so what do we beg for money for the rest of the month then?
Well, yeah.
The thing is, um i- if we had known about that, you know, we would have issued an interim check to, you know, to clear it, so.
So we, we do need to increase it. We'll look at.
And any other question?
Uh yeah, page eleven. Jack's towing. Going for evidence collection.
Yeah.
Did they uh build somebody's car?
Answer that. I'm sure that.
Would, would have towed their vehicle if it was a violation. And there's a rotation. We don't always.
I know, but it says evidence collection.
Yeah, we don't usually tow unless it's related to another. So let me check the two tons and I'll get back to you about that.
Any other question?
Page three.
Page three.
Uh do we, do we buy our winter salt in the summer to stock up or is this for last season, the nineteen thousand dollars for street salt?
So this, um our state contract did not follow the same um, this league, we follow the state year, so that's a June thirty year end. And we did have some salt that was required to be purchased to fulfill our contract from last year. So, uh, yes, the answer, sure answer is yes.
Do you have to buy eighty percent if it snows or not?
Yeah.
Right.
You good with that?
Am I, am I good that we're state mandated on how much salt we have to pay? No, not at all.
You need your choice, so.
If we, if we, if we don't get on the bid package.
However, no, it's not my choice. We can move along.
We estimate what we're going to use and when, when we don't use that much, like Jeff said, we have to, we estimate at a hundred percent and we have to buy. we estimate at a hundred percent, and we have to buy eighty percent, or you can buy up to a hundred and twenty percent for that same contract amount. So this was to get us to our minimum eighty cents. So we didn't use quite as much salt as we probably would have. Any other question?
One, just so, why is it listed this way, when we approved on the same page, two lines down, community district three hundred? We released the impact fees, but to get to that amount, we had to throw in seven thousand dollars in transition fees and ninety-four dollars.
No, the thirty thousand dollars was the amount of their request from the last time.
Right.
So that was that, and then the transition, the transition fees are the, the difference that we've collected since then, so.
And we can't transfer an administrative fee.
It's not in the, in the agreement with them.
But it, it is listed on here that the impact fee was twenty-three thousand. The transition fee was seven, and interest is ninety-four.
Right, at the time when I did the report and, and gave them the report, and they requested the thirty thousand, that was the composition of the thirty thousand dollars. It was, it was impact, transition, and, yes, there were transitions.
And now they get, they get fourteen, fourteen, five of additional transitions.
Exactly. Yep. Yeah, those transition fees are released automatically.
Oh, yeah, must be.
Yeah, so it did have a little bit of, you know, some transition when I did the report. Anything else?
Yeah, two questions. I was never gonna. I will entertain a motion to pay bills payable, accounts payable, sorry, amount of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. No moves. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Klein.
Aye.
Ms. Coe.
Aye.
Ms. Jacky.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Motion passed by you.
Any further birthday girl?
No.
To be.
No.
Happy birthday.
Happy.
No, truly not.
We have many things for public relations.
He's not here.
Everybody is feeling good. Everybody is related.
I would bring up for public relations is Jay had sent an email to Ryan and I about a potential consultant firm to look at branding and like cohesion across the different organizations within the Village of Hampshire. I would recommend that we add it to, or ask that we add it to the agenda for the next meeting or larger discussion to talk about, uh, brand identity, especially with the brochure coming out, wayfinding signs being discussed. I think this is a timely topic.
Would you like to hear a little bit more about that, or just wait till the next meeting?
Next meeting.
I thought you might say. All right. Planning and zoning, have an item?
We do not.
There's a meeting.
Okay. First time here, but.
Planning and zoning me?
You're zoning me?
Well, is it, is it a toll board with food at obvious eleven?
It's eleven.
Yeah.
Yes. But it's on the July twenty-eighth. Can't get paperwork.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I just love that.
Put it in the paper.
McPhail.
Say, the communication is horrible around here.
Talking public relations. Good night.
I'm the only person on the agenda. You can't even notify me.
Oh, I know, so I know. That, that's why I know. Nobody called me.
Because I have a sign made that says July twenty-eighth.
Oh.
It's been in my yard.
Um, just use a marker.
I will, but.
Use a vinyl letter.
No. Sharpies work great.
Sharpie.
Nobody told me either. Certified letter today.
See, this is the twenty-eighth, right? All my letters went out saying the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, man, you really want to go over there and make sure to get his letter.
Seventy-five dollars in certified letters I paid.
Is that for your birthday party? Party on the porch, party. Nice. All right. Yes, there is supposed, allegedly, a big rally in Siler on the eighteenth, which is Saturday.
I was at Henpak.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a Henpak according to Facebook.
Our sources are telling us that.
Did they move it?
Chief Thompson is, is, Chief Thompson, we are prepared for something at Henpak. We are now, we're a bit of a disappointment.
Then it must have changed because it was going to be at Siler all along.
It's all Facebook, so it's all just rumor anyway, that there, there has been talk. It's about something at Henpak, which we presume is going to.
That whole thing, ten feet?
Well, yeah, it's not the ideal situation, but we, we are, we will not be, police will not be present, but they'll be available. So the fire departments will notify, so the village is on alert, let's say. But it appears that it's going to be not a march of any kind, but just stand there with some signs and maybe a couple of speakers. Uh, that's, we're, we're just doing Facebook like you are.
Wait, it says, starts at two P M. Yeah, we're getting it from the girl at home, it's so.
Yeah, there was a.
I thought it was a guy.
No, it's a girl.
Her friend, I think. I think they're both involved.
It's a guy.
Nope. No, that's fine. Zach Oringer is pretty much the lead. I don't know if her lady is part of. Yeah, well, she's taken, the one in charge is taking a backseat since the FBI's involved. So. All right. Any new business or announcements before we turn?
Another communication problem? I hear that we're closing Washington Street tomorrow?
Um, yes, we are. Didn't pass that out?
No. Or did the businesses get notified?
Washington.
And that's your street?
That was on me. I've, I've been sending them out for the past weeks.
Why, why are we closing Washington? Just out of curiosity?
So the cave is having a fundraiser for GABR. And they were concerned about traffic crossing back and forth from GABR to the cave. And so I did check with everybody else except the village board, the fire department, the police department, the streets department. So this one time, they've asked that both Washington and May will be closed tomorrow.
Washington is sort of a full stop, is that right?
It's not going to close that far.
Yeah.
I did ask about access. It's actually kind of, hope to be honest, from, from public safety, but they closed the site. It's an inconvenience, and I'll just have to go around the block. Yeah. One time.
Great. Any other communications? For Mr. Klein.
I'm sorry?
Any other missing cases?
Uh, no.
Anyone else? Anyone else? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Y'all have a great night.